We do have a quorum, so I'm going to start it off and ask Councilman Hubert Robinson to give our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Amen. If you'll join me with the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas flag.
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our next item is some special presentations, recognition of service pin recipients for the year 2020, and employees of the year. And our city manager, Mr. Gray Smith, will take care of that for us.
Okay. So in December, we had our annual employee appreciation luncheon, and we did issue service pins to several of our employees. And so we're going to bring them up by the groups of the number of years for the pins, take a picture, and then they can be dismissed. So we have the five-year recipients are Roxanna Brierley, Rodney Reynolds, Audra Lane, Jamie Dorsey, Sherry McDonald, Adrian Brock, Ben Jones, Larry Burney, and Ronnie Claiborne. If I can get all of you to come up, please. You'll be back in a minute. And we can take our masks off for a real quick picture or pull them down, whatever you're comfortable with. You get it. Yep. Why was he hiding?
Quincy.
All right. And I did miss one. Sorry. Quincy Hamilton.
He'll be in the tenure group, too, so.
All right. So our tenure pin recipients are Amanda Bragg, Chris Sylvie, Roberto Hernandez, Lisa Jernigan, and one that is a special tenure who did not give me his pin and have him on my list is Greg Lowe. So Greg will actually get his pin tonight. We'll take a picture of that, and then if I can have the other tenure recipients come up. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
All right. So if we can get all the tenure recipients, please? Picture's going to get smaller. Somebody standing in front of this.
Please, can you just pull up the whole drawing?
Yep. There we go. Okay. Our 15-year recipients, Jason Hatch and Barnett Miles. Both the 15-year recipients are not here. And then we have one 20-year recipient, and I owe him a true apology. I messed up his name at the employee appreciation. I was looking straight at Royce McCullough, and I called Royce McCullough's name instead of Royce Jones. So Royce, if you'll come up and get your 20-year pin. There you go, sir. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Here's your box. Yep. All right. Then we will do the employee of the years, and we'll just call these up one at a time. And then we have one special award at the end for the police department. It is Rodney Reynolds. All kinds of times, not congratulations. Okay. Fire is Luke Logan. And Luke is on an emergency right now, so if he shows up, we'll interrupt and do that. So we combine City Hall Finance and Library, and this year it is Gerald Lee Turner from the library.
Shut up.
Her reaction today is so much different than the employee appreciation dinner. Congratulations. That was a sight to see. For those of you missed it, those that didn't, you saw the response for everybody that was there. All right. So community and public services is Ms. Audra Lane. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. So those are all of our employee of the year awards. So each year, I give out a leadership award, and the leadership award is just what it is. It's an outstanding leader for the city for that year. And this year, it is Ms. Alicia Wetzel. I'm surprised she's not on the same emergency as Luke is, so I think Chief Fortner may have convinced her not to do that. All right. Thank you very much. All right. This year, with what we did with our Parks and Recreation Department and all the changes that we made and trying to improve all of our facilities, we made a decision to give a difference maker award. This is the first time this award has been given, and it is given to the entire Parks Department at that time. So it is Mr. Brandon Worley, Mr. Benny Menza, Mr. Barnett Miles, Mr. Elvis Harvest, and Jamie Sanders. If you gentlemen will please come up. And I will tell you, there was a true commitment from the city council in last year's budget preparation to invest money into the parks. Guys, go ahead and get together, and I'll stand on the outside. But these guys put countless hours in, weekends, Saturdays, Sundays, to make sure our cemeteries and our parks look fabulous, and the difference was really noticed. We got lots of compliments. For the first time since I've been here, and the mayor will attest to this, we actually had zero complaints about our cemeteries, and there was a lot of damage done by hogs. And so these guys have done a ton of work to help in that, and so we wanted to recognize them for that. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good deal. Our next item is citizens' participation. That's where someone can come and talk to us if they want to, but I don't, we didn't have any sheets turned in, so nobody wants to participate, so that's okay. We'll go to our next agenda item.
Where's she at?
Yeah. Our next item is a public hearing to hear and receive input on a subdivision replat in ETJ at the intersection of County Road 4118, which is the Tolstvich Road, and County Road 4119. This is, Ann Tavera has submitted a re-subdivision plat. Basically, she's turning five lots into seven. So if you'll, you can come and speak for or against, if you'll just give us your name, your address, and then try to limit your comments to about three minutes.
My name is Anna Tavera.
Okay.
And my current address is 330 County Road 4120. I've here submitted the application to replat a couple acres on County Road 4118 and 4119 in the purpose of building a house per acre.
So obviously, you're for it. You're for the.
Yes.
Okay, good. Wasn't a trick question, though. Very good. Okay. Thank you so much. Does anyone else want to come speak in favor of or against the replat? Hearing and seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Our next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider with possible action the re-subdivision replat request in the ETJ at the intersection of County Road 4118 and County Road 4119.
Yes, council, at this time, staff is recommending approval of this subdivision replat.
I'll make a motion to approve the replat.
We have a motion made by Councilman Tim McRae, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion we need to have? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Mayor, if we can interrupt?
Yes.
Mr. Logan just made it in from his call, so we can do his recognition and move on.
Wonderful. That'd be great.
So as I said earlier, I'll wait till I get there. The employee of the year for the fire department is Mr. Luke Logan, and he just got back from a call. So Luke, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good deal. You bet. So, yeah, we, that task. Our next item is our consent agenda. Items under consent agenda require little or no deliberations by the council. Approval of consent agenda authorizes the city manager to proceed with conclusion of each item in accordance with staff recommendations. And we have consent items A through G. Y'all see there? I will entertain a motion on those.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, we have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galick.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Got a second by Councilman.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Who was the second?
Uh, Councilman, yeah.
I'll take. Does he say her name right? I'll do it.
That's great. Write that down.
History has been made.
That's great. Number nine, discuss and consider with possible action accepting a proposal by MVAH Partners to potentially develop a senior housing development.
Yes, council, this came about last year. The same company came in and requested approval to build a tax credit senior housing project. Last year, we opted not to do a resolution of support or support one of these projects. And so over the past year, we have worked through the process, and we actually went out for a full RFP, publicized it, and actually went one step further. We actually sent the RFP to every developer that the state had recognized on their website that did this type of projects. We did receive one email saying that they did not have a location in town, but they would love to do it. And we did receive one complete RFP. And so I can go into a lot more detail, or I can just say that the recipient or the participant, MVAH Partners, met all the requirements and have, is recommended to be the group that we negotiate a final pilot agreement and necessary agreements, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate those agreements. This will be a fast-moving project from the terms of the state guidelines and the state deadlines. And so with this approval, what there is not is any guarantee that any other board or commission will approve this. I don't remember, I think they have to do a rezone for the property that they have under contract. So this is not including that rezone, so you will see this potentially come back as a planning and zoning request and then final approval for the pilot and developers' agreements.
It's what we're working on today. Does that include the letter of support from the council?
At this point in time, no.
No, it comes back. Okay.
Yep, the letter of support will come back. We may have to do a special call meeting. We do not want to do a letter of support until we have the final agreement agreed to and executed, because once that letter of support goes in, that's what they need for the state. But we feel comfortable, and they have indicated that all of our requests that was made in the RFP will be met without question. So we have no reason to believe that we will not have the letter of support and this come back in front of the council.
Perfect. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to, on that item.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we accept the proposal by MVAH Partners to potentially develop the senior housing development and allow the city staff to enter whatever negotiations and begin the process.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 10 is to discuss and consider with possible action a moratorium on the sale of city property in which a survey or an appraisal has not been initiated as of the date of this meeting.
Yes, council, this is dealing specifically with adjacent property to the lake. We have a lot of property around the lake that is on the, across the street from residents, and a lot of residents have interest in buying them to build an ancillary structure, whether it is a garage, an apartment, a storage building, or potentially even a house. Prior to my arrival, this council did authorize several appraisals to be done and several surveys, and all of those properties, with the exception of one, Greg, has sold. So if that one comes up, the council's already approved that. And just until we figure out exactly what the process is going to be moving forward on this, we're just requesting a moratorium for sales that will just let everybody know that we are not interested in selling these properties at this point in time. This is part of the bigger, bigger-picture planning that we're doing with the city and our lake properties. So at this point in time, that's what we're asking. This also does not include the consideration that the council is doing for the boat project, because those would be surveyed and then properly put out for bid.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I have one question, but would you rather to get the motion first?
Yeah, I think that's proper procedure.
Then I'll, then I'll make the motion to approve the moratorium.
Okay. Have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae to approve. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Now we can discuss.
And I think it may be just more for clarification, but I know we all received the email from the individual that sounded to me like he had a pretty, seemed like it was a pretty good proposal. But we're not actually eliminating the sale of property like this. All we're doing is, just for clarification, is regrouping so that we can come up with a, with a more organized, structured way of accepting bids on this kind of property. Is that right?
Yes, that is right. What we're trying to do is figure out, do we want to put any deed restrictions on the property? Do we want to allow certain type of structures and not other structures? Because this property is becoming more and more popular, and so it is to come up with a plan for the rest of the development of the city property at the lake. At some point in time, we will have that decision, and then we would start the process over again if the council at that time wants to. And Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, typically under law, moratoriums can last for 12 months, and then the council either needs to extend it or make a final decision. So this is not a forever moratorium. It is a 12-month moratorium.
No, because that was my point, is that we're not trying to take a permanent stand against selling property. We're just, we're just trying to get control.
And you can always terminate the moratorium earlier than the 12 months. The longest it could last is 12 months.
Correct.
This will just give us some time to figure out what we want to do for all that.
Right.
So that gentleman that we got the email from, I think we can, at some point, go, that doesn't cut him out of the deal forever.
No, it's just we're not.
Just putting him on hold for now.
Yeah, we'll be putting him on hold.
Which it sounded like he'd be fine with that. I don't think he was looking for anything today. He just wanted to make sure he didn't get eliminated from it.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion we need to have? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
We have a motion.
No, that's right. Okay, that's right. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Number item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action financing of the city fleet vehicles for the fiscal year 2021.
Yes, council, so as you recall, last year, we went out for an RFP for financing for our fleet vehicles. And so this is just re-upping that financing for one more year for the new vehicles we bought this year. All of the old vehicles have been sold, and we are paying off the debt service from last year, and then we will just reissue a loan for these vehicles. It's an interest-only loan. It's for 12 to 16 months based off of the delivery of the next year's vehicles that we would want to do. This year, it actually turned out to be not 12 to 16 months, 12 or 16 months, it turned out to be 11 months. And so we certainly think that this is working. And just for the record, I think everybody knew this when we did this, the city's profit was over $100,000 buying and selling our city fleet from last year. So it was a profit for the city, buying and selling these trucks is what we presented during the budget when we did it, and we've now completed the first transaction. One of those transactions did involve an insurance claim on a toll vehicle, but we were over $91,000 or $94,000 right at that for just the buying and selling of the 3/4 ton trucks. So this is just with Austin Bank to do a one-year. It's basically a line of credit, and it's interest-only for us.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the financing of the city fleet vehicles for 2021.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goins, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any other discussion? I guess they're giving us a great interest rate, right?
We are, yes. We will get a good interest rate.
Good. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action approval of equipment purchases for the public safety complex.
Yes, council, this is one of the purchases that needs to go ahead and be made for the public safety complex. Lead time on these items, we want to make sure they're here. This is for all the storage and the other FFE for public safety complex, and the other FFE specifically covered in this is the lockers and the dorm beds for the fire department, as well as all of the large bulk storage, the fire lockers and stuff like this. So this is a facility-wide. Original budget was $232,000, and as you can see, this bid today is $225,900. It is through a state purchasing co-op, the Sourcewell Purchasing Agreement, contract number being 010920-dash-S is in Sam, P is in Paul, C is in Charlie. I will also tell you that there will be a couple of change orders that will come forward. It will not put us over budget, but there has been a couple of minor changes from when this bid package was initially sent out, dealing with the evidence storage for the police department, and we are working through those as we speak. But I did get an email saying we will not go over the original budgeted price.
Okay. Very good. So I'll entertain a motion.
I motion we approve the equipment purchases for the public safety complex.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Mindy Galick.
Oh, my gosh.
Second. Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 13 is to.
Mayor, we have to interrupt you, but we had two under 12. There was a 12A and a 12B.
Yeah, I figured we covered them both, but I didn't know.
No, only did one.
Okay, okay.
So we did the, we did the.
The big one.
The big one.
Okay.
The second one is dealing with the approval of fitness equipment.
Okay.
Again, city staff went out and evaluated this. I want to thank Stephen and Johnny Marcaski and Keith Fortner, those, the three that really helped us. Johnny and Stephen actually went to every single department and talked to 95 to 100% of the employees and asked what they were interested in. And so this equipment is based off of the feedback given by all of the employees across the city. The original budget was $90,000, and this purchase is for $88,552.95. It is being bought through a purchase of co-op. It's Texas By Board Purchase Agreement, contract number 583-19, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the fitness equipment for the safety complex.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goins. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that one carries also. Okay, now, number item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action implementing an employee, some employee policies. We take those one at a time or both?
Yes, but one at a time.
One at a time. The first one will be the sick bank policy, item A.
Yes, council, this actually was a policy that the city previously had. We suspended it for a couple of years as we implemented the PTO policy to just make sure everything worked well with PTO. It has, so this policy creates a sick bank to where employees can donate hours into the bank, and then if some unforeseen situation comes up and they need to borrow from the sick bank for a valid injury or illness, they can get money from or get hours from the sick bank. Once a donation is made, it is gone, you can't ask for it back. There is a committee of employees that make the decision, and those employees are listed in the policy. It is one from all the departments, and it is actually an employee-led committee. Their decision is, can be appealed to the city manager, but I can tell you, in my 20 years, I've never overruled a decision by a sick bank. We have not had a need for this in the last couple of years, so I think we're somewhere in the $6,000 to $7,000 range is what we had on the books prior to the suspension of the policy, and we are now requesting it be reinstituted.
I'm self-employed, I don't have access to any of this kind of stuff. I mean, if I were on a very low level, explain to me how this works. I mean, we have, we have vacation pay, we have the, what's the?
PTO.
The PTO, the paid time off.
Right.
I mean, or is this for, you know?
Yes.
I could give it to, I could put 10 hours into a sick bank, they give it to another employee?
Yes, so the way this works is employees donate at least one shift of what they work. So if it's an, if it's a regular eight-to-five employee, they donate eight hours. If it is a shift police officer, they donate 12 hours. If it's a shift firefighter, they donate 24 hours. This bank just sits there, and if an employee has a illness or injury that takes them out from work longer than their PTO covers, they can request this, a short-term carryover to get them through till they are ready to come back to work.
So this employee would use that for themselves?
No, they, it puts it in, and then anybody can apply that has donated. So if you do not donate into the pool, you are not eligible to get money out of the pool.
Okay.
So you have to donate each year, which is January, and if they donate a shift, then they're eligible to request a withdrawal from the pool.
Okay.
And then if that request is granted, then that gives them a carryover until they're ready to return to work.
So everybody can donate one shift a year?
They can donate as much as they want to, but a minimum requirement is one shift a year or one day of work.
So how many shifts does each person have in this to be able to donate?
Depends on their years of employment.
Okay, okay. So once I donate it, then I, and if I get real sick or injured, I can't say, I need that back. I just apply to the bank to try to get it.
You're correct. It's a voluntary program. You don't have.
Do you use within that year to go over carryover?
Yes, all the hours continue to carry over. That's why we have close to 7,000 hours. Now, next January, every employee will have to make another donation to be eligible for next year. So the whole thought process is that every year, we have people that buy into the pool, and then we have enough hours to. 24 hours. This bank just sits there. And if an employee has a illness or injury that takes them out from work longer than their PTO covers, they can request this, a short-term carryover to get them through till they are ready to come back to work.
So this employee would use that for themselves?
No. It puts it in and then anybody can apply that has donated. So if you do not donate into the pool, you are not eligible to get money out of the pool.
Okay.
So you have to donate each year, which is January. And if they donate a shift and they're eligible to request a withdrawal from the pool.
Okay.
And then if that request is granted, then that gives them a carryover until they're ready to return to work.
Okay.
So everybody can donate one shift a year?
They can donate as much as they want to, but a minimum requirement is one shift a year or one day of work.
So how many shifts does each person have in this to be able to donate?
Depends on their years of employment.
Okay, okay. So once I donate it, then I, and if I get real sick or injured, I can't say, I need that back. I just apply to the bank to try to get it.
You're correct. It's a voluntary program. You don't have- Yes, all the hours continue to carry over. That's why we have close to 7,000 hours. Now, next January, every employee will have to make another donation to be eligible for next year. So the whole thought process is that every year, we have people that buy into the pool. And then we have enough hours to grant them for that. So if somebody has a heart attack and they've got 21 days of PTO, they have to have some type of open-heart surgery or catheter. And the doctor says, hey, look, you need to take the next 50 days off and go through cardiac rehab or whatever it is. This gives that employee to where they earn their normal check until they come back. And so that's the whole process of this, is it gives them a tie-over in the event something happens. We have a lot of other methods for leave. This is not the only one. So, council member, to your point, they get PTO. And then when we did the conversion to PTO, a lot of our employees had extra time that did not convert over to PTO. So we created that catastrophic time off. So there are a lot of employees, some in this room, that have CTO time. And so they can also, if they use all their PTO, they then can go to their CTO and then they could come to the sick bank. As well as we have a PTO donation policy. So if an employee needs some extra PTO for whatever the reason is, they can request that other employees donate to them. This actually occurred last year with one of our police department employees that was affected by the tornadoes that hit Alto. Other police officers and other police department employees donated their PTO to that employee because they did not have enough time to take off. So there is multitude ways that employees, if they have a true need, can be off of work to take care of what they need to.
And this is money?
No, this is, this is hours. This is made.
So, you know, there's, I mean, 7,000 hours is what's built up into this fund right this minute?
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, I need to take a week off, 40 hours worth of work. And, I mean, I'm just guaranteed another 40-hour paycheck.
That is correct.
Okay.
So what we did on this, so, it's a great question. And so let me explain a little bit better to you. This does not take in consideration what their pay is. Where the PTO donation policy, the donation has to be from your level of step and grade or higher. This has no differentiation between a long-term employee or a new-term employee, a higher-salaried employee versus a lower-salaried employee. This is nothing to do with any of that. It is just hours worked.
And there's no separate sick time? I mean, if you take PTO, it's whether or not you want to take the day off or to go on vacation or you, or you call it sick?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we did that two years ago?
Two years ago.
I think we did that about two years ago. And I think it has worked beautifully from the employee standpoint.
That's what we do with my company and it works perfectly. So, yeah. I think it cuts down on people taking sick time, quite honestly.
Yeah, it does. And so there is, there is a maximum, and I probably should have said this at the beginning, the maximum is 50 days. The maximum you can get is a 50-day bank. And so if you think 50 days of work, that's 10 weeks. That's, that's a fair amount of time to do a recovery.
Two and a half months.
Yep, two and a half months plus whatever PTO they have. So it should give the employees ample time to recover and come back to work. And that's what this is designed for, is to keep the employees whole for their check until they can return to work. And this is, and the best part about this policy and program is it is the employees' time that is built up over the years. So this is not anything that the city council puts extra hours into or anything like this. This is truly-
It's not budget-related.
Yeah, this is truly-
People have been charitable and put this in there for everybody else here.
So if you just say 100 employees donate eight hours, that's going to put 800 hours back into the pool. Hopefully, nobody needs it. And then next year, we have the same 100. So now we've added 800 hours each year. And so this thing could get to be 10, 20,000 hours. That would be fantastic. Because then that shows that we haven't had anybody seriously injured or sick that needed to get into this. And we still have the employees that pay in. The, the one exclusion for this is anything dealing with workers' comp, on the job or not on the job. So we do have employees that work side jobs that are related to what they do for the city, or if it's not related. If they get injured at that job, they cannot use this. It is truly for illness or injury, not related to direct employment or side jobs.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to reinstate the sick bank policy.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our second item is to look at a tuition reimbursement policy.
Yes, council. This policy was adopted after this budget year when we actually funded tuition reimbursement for all the employees. What this will do is give our employees the ability to receive reimbursement, up to $5,000 for a bachelor's degree and up to $10,000 a year for a master's degree. It is based off of available funding. So there is no guarantee, if you get admitted into the program and you're at year four and that's a tight budget year, the council cannot fund additional monies, then there is no guarantee that they can do this. We already have one employee that actually started classes in the fall. That would be, if we do this and we retroact it back to the, the date of the adoption, would be eligible for it. And then we have several other employees that I think may be interested in taking care of or utilizing this policy. Roxanne, I think we budgeted 15,000 for year one, 15,000. So that's three employees can get five, or one employee can get a master's degree and get 10. There is a grade requirement. And then there is a requirement that they have to stay employed with us for two years, or they're subject to have to pay that money back to us. So it's not, there is a commitment from the employee to stay with the city for two years. Any questions or comments or clarifications needed on that policy?
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we adopt our tuition reimbursement policy.
I have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen to adopt the policy. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion?
If I can interject, are we making that motion to be retro back to the beginning of this budget year?
I mean, we, we discussed this when, July, August?
So we have one employee that would be eligible.
It should have started in, I mean, in October 1, correct?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
So you want, you want to adjust your motion to make it effective as of October 1, 2021?
I mean, our intention was, our intention was for this to be our policy moving forward, which would have started with the budget year, October 1.
Yes.
So to answer your question, I think that would be yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Just want a clarification, because I, thank you.
You bet. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So we're at the open forum for mayor and council. Anybody have anything they want to discuss, talk about?
It snowed a little.
It did snow a little, yeah. I tell you, hats off to Encore and Tom Trimble. I bet that guy has not gotten any sleep the last three or four nights. But they do a great job in taking care of our city.
I had, I was, I was outside and I would just, I mean, you could, I could sit on my patio and watch the explosions of transformers. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have an update on how many people are still out of?
No, we've not got an update. I do know that a large section, the O'Keefe Road, that power came back on late this afternoon. So the numbers are going down dramatically. There have been lots and lots of crews in town working across. But I do not have an updated number specifically for the city.
I know my little neighbors across the street, there were three or four houses that were affected. But they all had lights when I left to come over here. So.
I got a, I got a-
3:36 this morning.
I got a text last night from a lady in Austin concerned about her parents. They had been without electricity and heat for two days. And my response was, I'm in the same boat that your parents are in. I have been out for two days.
Right, right.
But I think that got all resolved. So I think they're doing great, yeah.
It was a blessing to hear the heater kick on at 3:36 this morning. It was cold. I didn't hear that thing kick on at 3:36.
I did. Randy was already fishing.
It was 56 when I was there.
Well, you could have come out and stayed on Lakeshore.
All right. Looks like the city manager's got something for us.
Yeah, council. So I have several. First off, to echo what all of the council said for Encore, they, they were out working countless hours. They've been communicating with us. There was some issues at one of the local medical facilities. And on Sunday night at 9:30, Tom's reaching out, trying to get in touch with one of the medical facilities so they can share the latest information. On top of that, I also want to thank our employees.
Absolutely.
We had, Joe was personally out there cutting trees down. I know we had multiple crews from Public Works. Fire department had multiple crews out. I was in contact with all the department heads that night, talking about the weather, the road conditions and what we should do. And, you know, our, our staff did a great job as well. It's never easy to make those type of decisions, but you always put the safety of the, the citizens and your employees and everybody that deals with the community first. It was a beautiful day. For those that haven't seen snow before, there was a lot of fun. Melissa made the, the first post very, very fun. We had nearly 300 comments. We've seen pictures of four-wheelers pulling canoes. We have golf courts, golf carts. We have speed buggies pulling kids and things that I don't know what they were pulling them in. One of our local businesses, Rainbow's End, did a snowman contest on Monday, had, I think, 80 to 100 people submit to that. It was a lot of fun. The fire marshal, the fire crew built a snowman on the fire marshal's back of his truck. So it was just a lot of fun. We were very fortunate. The number of traffic accidents was very low, if any, that were located inside the city limits. And so the actual effect of the snowstorm was very minimal on the city. Crews are still out trying to cut up all the trees. There was multiple residents out trying to get roadways open. And so truly, this really, when you have these type of events, it really brings the community together. And it really shows the strength of the community. And I think it was shown in Jacksonville since Sunday night. A couple of other things, we've not had our, our council meeting. The Santa driving through the neighborhoods, I think, was a huge success. It is scheduled for next year. We already have saved the dates out for Santa. We have confirmed with the North Pole that Santa will be available those four days. And so we will start working on the preparations of Santa getting here from the, the North Pole next year. It will probably affect a council meeting. We actually may move a council meeting to do that. And then we're actually going to add some more things to that to make it better for everybody and better for the community. And we certainly appreciate Santa Claus helping us. And we appreciate all the staff that helped us with that. Chris Sylvie is still here. He and his family, wife and daughter drove one night. Greg Lowe drove one night. Trina drove one night. Keith was out there all nights. Joe was out there all nights, except for the night he had a conflict with a previously scheduled event. Roxanna was put on COVID lockdown due to her son, or she would have driven. So this truly was a community event. Our, our Public Works guys did a fantastic job. Jamie drove us one night. And there was a couple of other drivers from Public Works. And it was just a great, great event. If you see some of the videos that were posted, it is just, it was super, super fun. We did have a joint workshop with Jedco last week on new ordinances, addressing some of the ordinances that are outdated that need to be improved for this community. And that work has begun. And we will start having some meetings dealing with that. We did have a couple of residents come to that meeting. And I'm super excited about that process. And we appreciate Jedco's support in, in trying to make some real improvements, setting the path forward for this community during this great growth that we're currently experiencing. The last thing I have, and give me just a second for me to get everything working, is we want to talk about the library.
Good.
And so during the past couple of months, we have spent a lot of time and effort with our architects, helping us with the library renovations. So up on the screen, what you see is the final floor plan. And I will go over this and just kind of briefly touch on what it is. What a lot of people do not realize is this is not just putting books in the library. It's not that simple. It could have been that simple. But the council made the commitment to completely renovate the library. So what you see is the main hallway right here is staying intact. We still have the classroom, the large boardroom that was right here, it's actually smaller than it once was. Then you have what was the offices. And we're doing some demo there to give the library staff more workspace. And we have two offices. This area right here is going to be the computer lab. And if you see, the computer lab is going to have a little three-foot wall, a little pony wall. So the, all the desks will have a place and all the computers will be in one general area. Where the city council used to meet, the old city council chambers, that is the auditorium. And that is going to stay the auditorium as is. The one thing we have done is we did add a storeroom. And that storeroom is being added to store all the chairs and tables needed for that auditorium. The good thing about the auditorium is it has an outside entrance to the public. So we're going to be able to allow that to be used like we had the auditorium in the old library. But it's going to be a lot better because we won't have to allow people to have access to the entire building. We can just give them access there. The double doors are being removed and moved over to here. And then the main area of the Norman Center is still wide open. So you see a circular circulation desk. And then we have a, another picture that I don't have here, that actually has every single bookcase that we have, two-scale laid out and ready to go. So we've counted the number of bookcases we had. We got all the measurements. And that drawing is two scales. So when we move everything back in, we make sure that all of the aisles are wide enough and everybody has good circulation and flow there. Good news are both the restrooms are ADA compliant. So we do not need to do any major renovations to the, the restrooms. There will be some flooring, potential changes, as well as maybe some ceiling tile changes. Probably the next biggest area, and it's all storage, is that large kitchen area in that storage room. We're actually going to, this whole area right here will be storage, have a little small storage area right there. And then this is going to be a little break room for the, for the library staff. It's not going to be a full kitchen. It's just going to be a little break room. But they'll be able to have area to get food and drinks ready for some of the program. Probably one of the neatest features that is going on is right now, it is designed to have four windows on this wall. And then we are also adding four windows on the back wall. So the library is actually going to have windows in it that it currently does not. So that's super exciting to be able to do that. We still think we are in budget. Trina, on the flooring, we actually have a pretty firm price on the flooring from a contractor. And what Trina has requested is the exact same flooring that is in the current library, which is that epoxy floor like you use in a garage that has the really hard surface and has the speckles of color. That is going to be in the entire building. So the existing floor is going to be redone. We're also putting in all-new lighting and most likely all-new ceiling tiles and ceiling grid. So we correct all of the add-ons and some of the curvatures that we have and some of the mismatches. We also, during this time, Public and Community Services already demoed the stage and actually has removed all the insulation and ceiling tiles. And during all of this rain that we have had, we've gone down there and there's been no signs of any roof leaks. So there was a lot of stained tiles in there. And so there does not appear to be any active roof leaks, which is very exciting for us. So the project is still moving forward. I know there is some frustration because people think it's taking too- I know there is some frustration because people think it's taking too long, um, but at the end, um, we didn't start until after the election, and then the city held a town hall meeting there, uh, to talk about the lake. So, uh, nothing really got started until the second week of November, third week of November, then you have Thanksgiving holiday, then you have Christmas holidays. So we still are on track to open up in April, and, and we think we will, uh, be close to that, barring any, uh, construction delays that we are unaware of. The good thing about this construction is you're not digging in the ground, you know what you have, and so, um, there shouldn't be any surprises on the timeline, and we are going to be, uh, bidding this out, uh, by East Project, and the staff will be doing it. So I think everybody's excited, I think we are where we wanted to be initially. Uh, I, I cannot comment on some of the other people saying that, "Oh, we could have just thrown in books and had a library open." I don't think that's what this council wanted to do, and that was never the plan from the initial, uh, standpoint, and I think we are still on track with what we had set area. So the main books are going to be right here, Trina, if I'm incorrect, please let me know, but I think most of the books are going to be in this area. This area right here is more of the child area in the back, and that's what that little circulation, or half-circle desk right there, is the kids are going to be at the back of the library, uh, and have a good area right there. This fake wall that is there now is going to be, uh, demoed, and then it will just be, uh, open, is the way I understand it, and there'll be a curvature, and that might be staying a fake wall and just the window coming through. Uh, I don't know if they've actually finally decided, uh, that. The HVAC engineer was up here, uh, last Friday, uh, looking at all the air conditioning, and one of the things that their initial report is, is we have too much air conditioning for that building. And so, uh, some of the problems that we've had with that air conditioning system not working properly is it may have been oversized and we put too much air in there for majority of the uses. Now, when you have a large event, and you have that room full, you certainly need, uh, the amount of air that was there, but on a daily basis, when your room is not full, uh, you certainly don't need that much air conditioning. So, uh, just wanted to give everybody a chance to, uh, to see where we are, and that we are still moving forward, and everything is, uh, still, um, staying on schedule, we think. Trina's met with the architect at least four times here, uh, on-site, and, uh, this is also the same architect. Uh, he met with the fire chief on Friday as well, and the station two, uh, expansion to provide, uh, better social distancing and protect the firefighters is also moving forward, but we'll bring that up at another time, because that will actually go out to bid.
The square footage on this building compared to the old library were within 100 square feet.
Very comparable. I don't remember the exact square footage, but it was very comparable.
I mean, very, yeah. I mean, they're both former old grocery stores, they both have almost an identical food brand.
Correct. And so where the area, where the usage may be a little, set up a little bit different, I, I think it is going to serve us well. So the other update I have is, it's kind of amazing what 24 Hours does. Um, Saturday morning, they poured the last part of the concrete for the new public safety complex, so the, all of the building, concrete is poured for the main structure. Uh, that was a, a huge thing for us to get done. Uh, all the red iron is sitting on the site, and, uh, the metal studs and everything, so you'll start seeing that progress move on. Uh, they still say July, while we all know that people are shaking their head no in the back of the room. Uh, I can only go with what the contractor says. Um, I don't know, I think it'll be close to then, um, so that's why you're starting to see, uh, some things move along. So what a difference, beautiful sunny day, a little cold Saturday morning, but they are able to pour the concrete, and then by Sunday, there was four inches of snow on the, on the building's site, and four inches of snow, as you see it melting in your own yards and everywhere else, it creates a lot, a lot of water. So, uh, hopefully that'll kick back off pretty quick and get more crews out there. And that is all I have.
Great.
Sorry it took so long.
No, that's great. Okay, so at, uh, 6:54, we will go into closed executive session, City Hall Conference Room for Open Meetings Act. Protects as Government Code Section 551.071, consult with City Attorney, 551.072, Real Property, and 551.087, Economic Development. Then we will reconvene back to open session for any action if necessary. So we will go into executive session at 6:50.